The October 11th, 2022, meeting of the Lee County Board of Education. Thank you all for being in attendance this evening. It's a good crowd here, and thank you for joining us tonight. If you would, please join me in a moment of silence as we center ourselves on the items before our board this evening. If you would, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I just wanted to, for the purpose of the public that is here and others who may be joining us online, Ms. Womack will be calling in hopefully this evening. She is not able to attend in purpose, in person this evening, and Ms. Hilliard is joining us online as well. She's feeling a little under the weather and did not want to share that with the rest of us, and we appreciate that. So at this time, we are entering into the public comments portion of tonight's meeting. We do have four people who have signed up to speak. Each public speaker is reminded you get three minutes to address the board, and at the conclusion of your time, I will set a timer. If you exceed your time, I'll simply tell you that is time, and you can take your seat, and the next person can have their opportunity. At this time, I call forward Alan Rummel. You're our first speaker.
Thank you. Alan Rummel, 1001 Northview Drive in Sanford. So I take an annual survey at work that's very similar to the teacher working condition survey, and have been in the position like half of our middle and high school teachers, where I don't always think that management uses the feedback to drive change, so I wanted to talk a bit more about that survey tonight. There's been discussion at board meetings about attracting and retaining the best teachers, and that conversation has typically revolved around salary. Since this board has limited control over teacher salary, I think the teacher working condition survey is a good starting point for insight into how to accomplish that goal. Of course, follow-up is needed to properly evaluate the survey responses, but it's nonetheless a great place to begin. So as I continue to review that document, I found some good questions on professional development, where teachers tell you what training they're receiving and what they need to be better teachers. So here's a quick summary of that, and this is the entire district with all schools included. So first one, please indicate the role teachers have at your school in the following areas. Determining content of in-service professional development programs. Fifty percent said they have a moderate to large role in that, so that leaves half saying that they had little to no input in selecting their professional development. So the next two questions, I'm going to combine for clarity. The first is, in the past two years, have you had 10 clock hours or more of professional development in any of the following areas? And then, in which of the following areas do you need professional development to teach your students more effectively? So first is your content area. Thirty-seven percent say they haven't received that 10 hours in the last two years, and 38 percent agree that they need that development to be better teachers. Differentiating instruction. Fifty-seven percent say they haven't had 10 hours in the last two years, and 47 percent say that they need more development there to be a better teacher. Closing the achievement gap. Seventy-seven percent said they have not had 10 hours in the last two years, and 51 percent agree that they need that to be a better teacher. So I did find more than that, but I want to stop there. Seventy-seven percent said that they haven't had training in closing the achievement gap. That gap was already growing in Lee County before COVID, and this board's COVID actions only made it grow more rapidly, according to the data. And you're telling me that this isn't something that you're specifically working to address? So as a parent, that's pretty infuriating. And from the September RAMP publication, one of you said, quote, "With these qualifications, I have an extensive knowledge of what it takes to make every student in Lee County schools successful," end quote. Do you? Because that's not what we're seeing happen. Another of you said regarding declining enrollment, quote, "I would analyze the data to understand trends related to the decline," end quote. Why aren't you doing that now? I've provided a lot of relevant data before the board in these meetings, only to be shrugged off and met with comments suggesting that our school system is just fine, but it's not. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Viva Quick.
I'm here on behalf of, I guess I want to say, parents, concerned parents. My son attends Southern Lee High School. I'm a former employee of Southern Lee High School. And we're just trying to figure out the process of what are y'all doing about transferring kids from school to school, in between school to school? It's a lot of going back and forth, kids from Southern going to Lee Senior, and we know for fact some of them are in Southern Lee District. So what are y'all doing to control the equaling out from school to school? You can't have one school top on the other one. You know, it's all education, it's going to be education, we're getting one way or the other. We have coaches from Lee Senior texting our kids, "Come over here, come over here and get you. We'll give you rides and stuff." That's not acceptable. All our kids should have a fair chance of playing sports and getting an education. When you have coaches from another school texting your kids and saying, "Come over here to the winning teams, where you can play at," it's not fair. You have the kids of Southern Lee, you're breaking them down, and it's just not fair to our kids. My son's a senior this year, so I dealt with it for three years. I had to point, tell the coach, "Stop texting my son." And I'm just trying to figure out, when is it going to stop? We keep saying, and I keep hearing, you know, "It's not happening, it's not happening." It is happening. We have plenty to keep saying, "Yeah, they're texting our coach, they're texting our coach." Coaches calling the kids, you know, on Instagram and Snapchat stuff. It's not right. That's a kid. If you want to talk to my son, it'd come to me. I'm not allowing my son to come over here. And I'm just trying to figure out, what is y'all process to verify definitely that these kids are in the district they've been going to, the school they're going to? And I just want to just figure out, what is the process? We need some closure on it, because it's not right. My son is graduating this year, but I still have kids over there that I coach football. And I know some of them in the district that's in the Southern Lee that's here playing now. I'm just trying to figure out, what are we going to do about it, what can be done about it? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, I have Mr. Chris Gaster.
I agree 100% with you. I think there's a lot of things that need to be changed. One thing I'm going to talk about is the dress policy, 4301 and 4316. The board has a responsibility to uphold these policies, so it's the superintendent to uphold them according to the board, and so does the principals and assistant principals and teachers, and right on down the list. And the reason I'm referencing that one is because that references student dress and appearance. And just like, you know, this lady here has issues she's dealt with three years with her child, I don't agree with that either. Somebody's got to hold somebody accountable for that, and I think that's going to start with the principal of the school. I don't necessarily think it falls on the superintendent at that point. I think that's a superintendent needs to make a phone call to the principal, find out what's going on. So student dress and appearance, you know, last time I was in here, I talked about furries and people dressing up like animals. Come to find out that, you know, apparently there is one litter box in Lee Senior bathroom. I'm still waiting on a photograph. I knew that if I tried to take a tour to school, they'd clean it up real nice, make it look like it never happened. So we've got some serious issues here, all the way from what this lady here is talking about, all the way from kids responding to teachers and meowing or barking, possible litter box in the bathroom. I mean, you know, you've got policies here. To me, that's creating an environment where a student can't learn. And I believe that if you want to sit on the board and you want to create policy and make policy and make other people accountable, I think you should start holding yourself accountable. And I think you need to be looking into these issues. And I pray, Lord willing, that after next month, there'll be some people sitting in them seats right there that can start making some change. And if it has to start with the superintendent and work their way down, and that's just the way it's going to have to be, because you've got to draw the line, and the line starts now. Thank you.
And our last speaker tonight is, is it Latoya Sumpter? Okay, thank you. With that, then, that concludes our public comments portion of tonight's meeting. At this time, I've asked a couple of board members to share with you the Lee County Schools' vision, and then a portion of Policy Code 2120, the Code of Ethics for School Board Members.
Lee County Schools, in partnership with the community, will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovations, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society.
Thank you.
Code of Ethics for School Board Members Policy Number 2120. The board recognizes that collectively and individually. All members of the board must adhere to an accepted code of ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the board, avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the board, avoid the misuse of public funds, avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts, and avoid making confidential information public. The board accepts the code of ethics established by the North Carolina School Boards Association.
Thank you. At this time, we have the agenda before us. Are there any comments regarding the agenda? Hearing none, I entertain a motion for approval. We have a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the floor. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none. We also have the minutes of the student transfer appeal hearing of 9/12/2022, and the regular board meeting of 9/13/2022. We have a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any, thank you, any opposed? There is none. At this time, we'll move to the chairman's report, and my report is very brief. Since we last met, the North Carolina School Board Association Board of Directors met, and I'm a member of the Board of Directors. We met as a whole group, as well as the Legislative Committee has met to discuss and debate and formulate our legislative priorities for the upcoming biennium. And the Legislative Committee put forth our suggested legislative priorities. These are basically the guiding principles by which NC School Board Association will advocate on behalf of public schools to our legislature over the next two-year budget cycle. And there was a lot of good debate, there was a lot of good discussion. It is really very educational to be a part of a team that is just a wealth of knowledge and information about the workings of our government in Raleigh, to the federal government, to the funds that are available, and I learn so much. I don't, I contribute as well, but I definitely come home with information overload. So that being said, that legislative agenda and legislative priorities will be presented at the North Carolina School Board Association Conference coming up November 14, 15, and 16. As we discussed last month, this board can send four voting delegates. At this time, I think we have three who have said that they are free and able to attend that. That would be myself, Mr. Ladotti, and Ms. Womack. Is there anybody else that wants to add their name to that list? Okay? If not, then that's, that will be our representative delegates to vote on the matters that will come before the full delegate assembly during that conference. The conference is a wonderful opportunity to learn a lot of things, and I thank this board for the opportunity to attend. That is essentially the conclusion of my chairman's report. Dr. Bryan, your superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Waller come forward, please, be recognizing our Clean School of the Month, and very excited to recognize the hard work of our custodians and staff who put together, keep our schools in good shape, and appreciate their hard work.
Chair, board members, Dr. Bryan, it is with great pleasure that I announce that Deep River Elementary is our Clean School Award winner at this event with a score of 100%.
That's fantastic.
Very, very proud.
Good job.
So this, I should have come up with a name for y'all. They have matching shirts, and they didn't get me one. This is Mrs. Joyce Williams, and Ms. Jackie Petty, and Mrs. Margie Reeves, and they are our, I was going to say, I was going to say dynamic duo, but that's not enough. I got to say the
Terrific trio.
Terrific trio, that's what we'll say. They are absolutely wonderful. I'm so excited that they are recognized for this. They worked really hard to keep our school clean, and thank you for recognizing us for that. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, at the last board meeting, there were some questions raised by the JROTC program at Southern Lee High School. Dr. Chris Dawsonback will be coming forward to answer those questions.
Thank you. I'm going to interrupt your progress as a point of privilege. I just want to say thank you for these young people who showed up this evening to be a part of our meeting. This is, I see these good-looking young people representing education in Lee County. They may not be necessarily ours, but they're all our kids. Thank y'all.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Bryan asked me to investigate this matter on the afternoon of September 7th with a concern that the JROTC program at Southern Lee High School was potentially being placed on probation due to low enrollment numbers. As a former high school principal, I was very aware of the expectations between the United States Army and ROTC program, which requires that a minimum of 100 students or 10% of the school's population be enrolled in order to maintain that chapter of the ROTC program. The first thing I did was went to our accountability department and asked them to pull class rosters so that I could take a look at the numbers that were enrolled in the class at that current time. Based on the data that was in Power School on September 7th, the enrollment was well over the 100 that was required. The next morning, I met with Lieutenant Colonel McIntyre and Sergeant Major McCray, who run the ROTC program at Southern Lee High School, to discuss any concerns that they had. During that time, I also asked for an updated copy of the contract between the district and the United States Army. Together, we reviewed that contract, and they confirmed that all requirements within the contract were met, which include enrollment numbers, classroom space, storage space, and the use of other facilities in the school, such as the gym and parking lots. The instructors were quick to point out that they did want more space, but the space that they had was adequate for the enrollment that they had. I asked the instructors and principals to please verify the information and let me know the next day, because as you know, enrollment in the first few weeks of school can certainly change. On the morning of September 9th, the principal emailed me to let me know that the numbers that we had provided in Power School were in fact correct. In conclusion, the Southern Lee High School JROTC program, based on the information that I obtained, is not on probation and was never in jeopardy of being placed on probation. The program remains in good standing. They have submitted their information to their command at this time. They will continue to serve the students of Southern Lee High School well, and they will continue to be supported by Lee County Schools. Any questions?
Can you update me on what part of Southern Lee is being used for storage as far as their uniforms and all their equipment and things?
They have two storage closets in the school. One used to be an old ISS classroom on the main 200 hallway. It's a pretty large space. They are also storing some things in the back of a classroom. They have had a decline in enrollment over the past several years that does not require as much storage, because they don't need as many uniforms, but they do have two places within the school for storage.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions? Hearing none, thank you. Dr. Dawsonback.
Madam Chair, just to give a brief update, some things have been going on around our school district. We've recognized several people over the last month for special awards, and I'd like to start with our exceptional children teacher of the year, April Bussi, at Tranway Elementary School. Also, just last week, recognized our beginning teacher of the year, Kirby Forbes, at Lee County High School, who teaches math. And then just yesterday, recognized Lee County's Principal of the Year, Natalie Kelly, who's principal at Sandley Middle School. So we're very excited to recognize them and all of their efforts and those, it's always great to see so many of their peers celebrate them in their accomplishments. As you also know, last week, we announced a partnership with Lee County Education Foundation, First Bank, and the Boys and Girls Club to teach a pilot group of middle school students life and leadership skills. Members of the Boys and Girls Club will be meeting with that pilot group of students twice a month. We think it's very important to develop those life and leadership skills for students to be successful, not only in the classroom and in our schools, but beyond. And I feel like that they can take those sort of transferable skills and be a success for whatever it is they want to do. As always, we're very grateful for the partnership with the Lee County Education Foundation, Boys and Girls Club, and First Bank. Also like to recognize, as many of you know, I also have a student advisory team that consists of students from each of, from Blackstreet Academy, from Lee Early College, from Southern Lee High School, and Lee County High School. In all, the total is about 90 students who I meet with periodically to get their feedback and input on things. And it's a great group, and very appreciative of their time that they commit to that. But we took a leadership retreat, so to speak, about a week and a half ago, took students to High Point University, which brands itself as the premier life skills development university in the country. And we had a day where we talked about life and leadership skills. We talked about college application process. We talked about team building. Students also got a tour of the school, and also were able to hear a student panel from High Point University. And even though we were talking about the college application process, one of the points of the meeting was to stress the idea of, again, transferable skills that can go between education and careers and all the different things that students might take into account. We had a very diverse and group of students with lots of different interests, and certainly very excited about what our students accomplished there, and look forward to working with them throughout the school year, and really appreciate their time and input. Finally, I'd just like to say that this past weekend, great presentation of Annie Junior at Lee County High School that involved not only high school students, but also many students from across the district in the production, and it was a really, really great success, I believe. Finally, I just want to thank everybody for all their efforts to help us as a school district and getting off to a great start. We really appreciate everyone's support. Our staff have done an awesome job, our students, our parents, community support, all the businesses and nonprofits and faith-based organizations out there that do everything they can to support our schools, and we're very appreciative. Thank you.
At this time, we have several committee reports for the evening. Ms. Hilliard, the curriculum and instruction report from September 21st?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. The curriculum and instruction met on Lee County High School on September 21st. We discussed the Comprehensive Continuous Improvement Plan, which is the CCI P grant, and it will be on the consent agenda this evening, on tonight's agenda. Dr. Dawsonback gave an instructional update with a dual-language program with our Spanish classes at Tranway and at Broadway Elementary, and they had great things to say about those kindergarten classes, and the children are settling in well with that instruction, and 90% Spanish and about 10% English. Mr. Hart gave an update on the Life Sciences Academy. He's our CTE director, shared comments pertaining to the Life Cycle Academy, Life, excuse me, Life Science Academy at both the high schools, the Apple Swift Certificate Program, and the new courses that are being offered at the middle school. The next, Dr. Bryan touched on some updates, that teachers are doing letters training, and highlighted the various programs at the high schools. The NAF Academy Caterpillar, the IB program. The next curriculum and instruction meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October 19th, at Sandley Middle School at 3:30.
Thank you. The Facilities and Technology Committee met. Mr. McCracken.
Madam Chair, we did meet on September 27th. Several items on the agenda. First of all, the Tranway Park Improvement Presentation, done by Reggie Alred, who's the CEO of all, the Tranway Park Improvement Presentation, done by Reggie Alred, who's the CEO of Old North State Baseball League, presented the proposal for Tranway Park. He's already presented the proposal to the Lee County Parks and Recreation, and they approved the proposal because of the school district using those facilities. The county requested the Old North State Baseball League share the information with the Lee County Board of Education, and since the county remains the owner of the property, the Lee County Commissioner makes the final decision on the improvements of Tranway Park. It was a consensus of the committee to schedule a tour of Tranway Park with Mr. Alred, as well as have the board attorney to review the proposal between the County of Lee and the Old North State League, and that tour will be attended by Jane Ladati and myself. Next item concerned the security entrance design for Bullock, Deep River, Edwards, Floyd Knight, Greenwood, Ingram, Lee Early College, Tranway, WB Wicker, Warren Williams. Consentences the committee to table this item into the October meeting because of the funding source commitment and the time in December 2024. Administration has concerns with the cost of receiving the materials and construction completion timeframe. Next item, propane gas bid. It was a consensus of the committee to award the propane gas bid to Hunter Oil and Propane from September 1st, 2022, to August 31st, 2023, based on a margin of 30 cent per gallon above the cost for Hunter with $12 delivery fee and sales tax, and this item will be placed on the 10-11-22 consent agenda. Our committee had originally recommended the purchase of additional laptops, but that recommendation was not included on this board agenda because we were notified that our district received a large emergency connectivity fund grant through the FCC. This grant will enable us to purchase even more laptops, Chromebooks, bus Wi-Fi service, and student Wi-Fi service. The grant will come before the next F and T and Finance Committee. And speaking of that, the next F and T committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October 25th, 4:30, Hines Education Building. Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We also had the Finance Committee meet on 9/29/2022. Ms. Hilliard?
Yes, at the Finance Committee meeting, we discussed the ESS, the Educational Staffing Solutions Report, which is the subsystem that we are now using, the sub-company that we're now using to fill, and I'm talking about the fill rate, which is up approximately 70%, which is an overall increase of approximately 20% from the fill rate at the same time, at this same time last year. ESS has hired Lee County Schools dedicated consultant to recruit and fill open vacancies. So, we, excuse me. Mr. Conway is still using some teachers to cover classrooms in middle and high school. Discussion took place amongst the committee regarding the need to re-implement teacher coverage at the middle and high schools, and we will be discussing that, excuse me. So, they must use the ESS frontline system before using that to fill vacancies prior to allowing any teacher coverage at the high school and middle school, as it is the intent to keep planning periods available for teachers as much as possible. This is, this information is now, is placed under the new business for tonight's meeting. Dr. Bryan mentioned, brought up, and discussed a retention bonus, presented two different retention bonuses for the committee. That is also on, under new business this year, under, I'm sorry, in this meeting. We also discussed the propane gas fees, which Mr. McCracken discussed. It's on the consent agenda. The NetComm Open Purchase Order, which was also under the, which is under the grant. We reviewed the attorney invoices, financial report, and the board expense, and our next meeting is scheduled for October 27th at 5:00 p.m.
Thank you.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
And that brings us to the Policy Committee.
Yes, ma'am. We met on September 20th, and we discussed several different policies. Policy 7510, which concerns leave. Policy 7550. Policy 7810 and 7815. All of these have recommendations from the North Carolina School Board Association, with one minor change that the committee is recommending, that we add a line under Policy 7550, avenues due to inclement weather. And we're adding that the staff and faculty should see School Closing Guide chart that they can find at our web address, and also with HR and Finance to help point our staff in the place they need to find how to make up time missed due to inclement weather. At the conclusion of the meeting, we put all of that for our first reading tonight, and our next meeting is Tuesday, October 18th, at 5:00 p.m. at the Hines Education Building.
Thank you very much. That concludes the committee reports for the evening. As we move to the action items that are before us this evening, we do have the consent agenda. Is there any discussion of the consent agenda as presented?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none. The consent agenda is approved as presented. There's no unfinished business before the board this evening, bringing us to new business. We do have four schools that were identified as low-performing schools, and they are here to present their plans for improvement. Dr. Dawsonback?
Good evening. Again, I'd like to begin by providing you and the public with a little bit of context regarding school performance grades. As you know, these grades were released by the state on September 1. Performance grades are calculated on an 80-20 formula, with 80% of the grade coming from school proficiency, student proficiency on testing, 20% from student growth. Within our district, 10 of 14 schools that receive a performance grade met or exceeded growth, with our district above the state average in the percentage of schools that met growth. Given the learning loss that students suffered across the state due to the pandemic, the number of low-performing schools increased throughout the state from 488 to 864, four of which we are here to talk about this evening. I would also make note that the number of low-performing school districts across the state increased from eight to 29. Lee County Schools is not a low-performing school district. As you know, there's been a great deal of discussion recently at the State Department about the school performance model, with our state superintendent being quoted as saying that the current accountability model does not do justice to the hard work and teachers that students put in every day in schools across the state. She went on to say that the current model is flawed because it is not an accurate reflection of what school quality is, and is not an accurate reflection of student success. Perhaps the biggest issue with the model is that school performance grades are correlated heavily with poverty levels within schools and districts, meaning that schools and districts with a higher level of poverty end up with lower grades. Superintendent Truitt has since formed an advisory committee to examine the school performance grades and is seeking feedback from stakeholders at this time across the state, and has stated that her team plans to present policy revisions to the General Assembly during the long session in January for changes to the school performance grade model. I share all of that so that you do have some context on what's being presented tonight and our current grading system and what it says or does not say about our schools. There are four schools within our district that have been identified as low-performing by the state, and as such are required to develop plans based on general statute that outlines goals for improvement that will later be submitted officially to the board and to the Department of Public Instruction. Schools in our district identified as low-performing are JR Ingram Elementary, Eastleigh Middle School, Wesley Middle School, and Lee County High School. Tonight, each of these schools will provide a brief overview of their preliminary goals and action steps that they will put into place to drive school improvement. Legislation also outlines other requirements for low-performing schools, which you have in a timeline that's been provided for you. Tomorrow, letters will be sent home electronically to parents, and these preliminary plans will be placed on each school's website. For a period of two weeks, we will open up for public comment and suggestion on any feedback on the plans. School improvement teams at each school will then review any submitted feedback and consider revisions to the plan as needed. Finalized plans will be entered into the state-required template called NC STAR, and will be presented to you as a final plan for the November 1 board meeting. If the plans are then approved by the board, we have five days from that meeting to then submit to the state. The district must also include a goal that's applicable to all schools, which also has been provided to you, but I do want to go over that very briefly. We want to focus on three things within our low-performing schools that we think can move the needle. A comprehensive data analysis in specific areas of improvement. Part of that is already happening. We are still waiting on some pieces of data from EVOS to be released from SAS before we can move forward with additional data discussions. We want to work to further align our curriculum to content standards and ensure consistent pacing is being followed. That work began this summer and continues today. And we want to offer targeted professional development support and coaching on differentiated instruction and interventions, which will help move the needle. I want to thank the principals that are here with me tonight, and as they make their way forward, I want to thank them and their staffs for all the hard work they've put into these plans. They will provide for you tonight a brief overview of their goals for the upcoming school year to move their school out of low performance. The principals will go in the following order. Mr. Robert Newby will represent Eastleigh, Dr. Lisa Duffy for JR Ingram, Ms. Jamie Cox for Wesley, and Ms. Betsy Bridges for Lee County High School.
Thank you. Good evening.
At Eastleigh Middle School, our focus this year is going to be on increasing the number of students that are proficient in our tested subjects, and we're going to move to either meet growth or to exceed growth. And the action steps we have in there right now, they're doing weekly and common assessments, and their POCs, each math and English and language arts team is dissecting that data to see which students need more assistance. We have structured intervention time schedule every day that the students are spending on those areas where they did not do well on their weekly assessments, and then on their unit assessments at the end of every unit, students are also, our teachers are looking at that data to present as well. So, we make sure those kids that are not meeting those specific goals every week and every unit are now meeting where they need to be before we get to May. And then our third goal is going to be to retain effective teachers, and that, the action steps we have for that is going to be make sure our teachers are recognized. We have a teacher, a staff member of the month, a teacher of the month. We have a beginning teacher of the month, and we recognize those teachers during our monthly meetings, and we have shout-outs for all our teachers during the school years. Where for those teachers who are doing something well, the staff knows that they appreciate it at Eastleigh Middle School.
Thank you, Mr. Newby.
At JR Ingram, we also are focused on three goals, the first one being student achievement. We anticipate having 60% or more of our students proficient in reading and math, and 65% or more proficient in science. To achieve that goal, we are very strategic in our PLCs to ensure that we are analyzing the data, using the data, tracking the data on a schoolwide data spreadsheet, as well as a growth chart for the school and for individual students. We are also using a 40-minute eagle time. That is a time in our master schedule for all students to get exactly what they need. We're utilizing all appropriate staff during those times to ensure that students are either getting pre-exposure to content, interventions, or acceleration and enrichment. We are also focused on, as our second goal, just increasing our parental involvement and support, and making sure that our families know what's going on in our schools. We are excited to offer more opportunities for our families to be on campus with school-wide events, as well as curriculum nights, parent-teacher conferences. We are making sure that we are pushing out information to our families through a variety of methods, whether that be social media, or class dojo, school dojo. I have a parent newsletter, as well as a parent email list that I send out information about curriculum and testing, so that that would benefit our families staying connected with our school. Our last goal is to focus on teacher turnover and staying below the state attrition rate. We had nine certified positions to replace, starting off the 21-22 school year. For us, that meant 50% of our third, fourth, and fifth grade classrooms, which are our testing grades, needed new additions to those grade levels. In fifth grade, the most tested grade level in elementary, we had 75% of that team needing to be replaced, and was not able to fill all of those positions. But this year, we are in much better standing and hope to keep the staff that we have in place with partnerships with our community, utilizing our Sunshine Committee, our Beginning Teachers Program, and just really encouraging the staff that we have in place to stay with us, because we definitely know that their impact is obviously very significant to our student performance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. So, at Wesley Middle School, we are focusing on three goals for the year. Our first goal has a focus on academic improvement and growth of our students. Our action steps for this, one, we have a pride time, which is our intervention and enrichment time that we have incorporated into our schedule for every day. This is 40 minutes of time where we will focus on the skills that the students need, not only to help remediate, but to push for growth for our higher-level students with enrichment. All of our math and ELA teachers are working together during their PLCs to create common assessments so that we can more accurately track their data and see how our students are improving on a weekly basis. And all faculty will assist in helping out these students in the small groups with their skills, including our exploratory teachers. We are focused on protecting our PLC time, which is our professional learning community time for our teachers, both in our content areas.
time for our teachers, both in our content areas.
Check, check. One, two. Christine, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, she's back. All right.
Sorry about that.
No, thank you. We were warned that we could have a snafu, so I think we are back.
Motion to resume our board meeting.
We have a motion to resume our board meeting from where we left off. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or opposition? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none. Ms. Cox, you can pick up where you were. Thank you.
Well, and I would like to go back to our goal one, because I failed to mention that our academic coach that was added, thank you very much, has been instrumental in facilitating those PLCs. So what a wonderful addition to our faculty. With our second goal, we want students to demonstrate positive behaviors in the learning environment. We want to have a safe learning environment. And so we want our students to understand the expectations, and to make sure everyone is on the same page. We have behavior assemblies at the beginning and mid-year, and then we have created different slideshows that all teachers are showing in the classrooms to make sure students are reminded about expectations. Another wonderful addition has been our dean of students, because she can work directly with families, and to help create plans for students to be successful. We also have developed some community partnerships. One that Dr. Bryan mentioned was our life skills sessions with our Boys and Girls Club Partnership, which has been a good addition, too. We want to protect that instructional time, so our goal is for our students to understand the expectation, so that they can really get all the instructional time that all our students deserve. Our third goal is to increase our family and community engagement, and to do that, we will do all that we can to make sure that information is shared in a timely manner and in various methods. So by our Blackboard Connect system, our weekly messages, updating our website, Facebook, social media, our signage at the school. We have a parent advisory committee that we started last year, and we want to continue for this year. We want to recruit volunteers. So not only do we want to be able to push information out, but our goal is to make sure our parents and our community members feel welcome to come and be volunteers in our school. We are implementing various family and community nights throughout the school year. So we want everyone to take ownership and to be involved in making our school a better place.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, so at Lee County High School, we are working to increase the rigor of our instruction, but by having support for all of our students, using school-wide strategies in all content areas. We're doing this by making sure that we are incorporating writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading in all of our classes. And we started the year with lots of professional development on these things, so that teachers knew how to incorporate those into their lesson plan, and get kids more engaged and out from behind the computer, which we have had to be for so many, for several years now, where we wanted our kids to want to be back into the classroom and engaged in their learning, instead of just learning from the computer. We also are incorporating a lot more walkthroughs and observations of our teacher with immediate feedback on these strategies that we are seeing in our classrooms. So coaching in the moment, or after we've been through, about what we have seen and what we think that is working well, and maybe something that they might want to tweak to get better, and to reach more students in their classroom. Another goal is to increase the growth in our school scores, as well as the test scores and our ACT exams. One of the big things at the high school level is our ACT exam, and that is given to all junior class members. And so we're kind of taking a multi-pronged approach with that, where we are targeting during our Jacket Sting Advisory Group time, where all students will receive test-taking and test prep on the ACT, so they understand why they're taking it and what it actually can do and will do for you, as well as how to narrow down choices, things like that on the exam. Where also, our students in their sophomore year take the pre-ACT, and so we have targeted those students that scored where, in the educator field, we talk about the bubble, the kids that are very close to passing. They did move the ACT score last year from 17 to 19, so there was a two-point gain that we had to make with those students. That's big when it comes to ACT scores, so we are targeting a very large range of students that we're going to look at their pre-ACT, see what areas that they needed improvement on, and give them instruction from teachers in our building, as well as our coaches from our district, to help them in those areas, which is the reading, language arts, the math, and the science areas. We also are implementing a multi-tiered system of support for all of our students, and targeting students not just the ones in an immediate need, but starting at our Tier 1, which is what do we make sure that all of our students have, and then going up in terms of support for students that are struggling in our classroom with their academics, as well as socially and emotionally. Our third goal is to target and provide support for all of our students, our staff, and our families. We think that a school is kind of a microcosm of what's going on in our environment, so we are trying to make sure that everyone in the school has what, basically what they need, or we can get them the support that they need. So things that we're doing, very similar to my sister school's, communication is big. We make sure that we are promoting on all the social media platforms, and targeting the ones that parents are mainly on, the ones that students are on, and then also putting out in Blackboard Connect. And we have had a big push this year to make sure that everything went out in English and Spanish. We have a very large Spanish-speaking population in the home, so we're making sure that all families are able to access the information. We also, at the beginning of the year, did professional development. It was a choice professional development on restorative justice practices, and that has been, went very well with the one-minute meetings that we learned about in our professional development over the summer. And so we have incorporated that also into what we call our Jacket Sting, which is what our, my sister schools were talking about, their intervention time, their pride time, those kinds of things. This is their advisory class. So our teachers are taking time to get to know the students and what they do need, and communicating with all of the resources that we have available at our school. Let's see. We also are restructuring from a committee, or just a small group of people that seem to do a lot of the work, to more of a team-wide approach, structuring our school, so that everybody is, has a voice, and everybody is able to have input in these major things, as well as when we're trying to plan things, that there is someone from each area that is participating in that. We are big into promoting student leadership at Lee County High School, and allowing our students to step up and show what they can do with support. So while we're here, it started even just this summer when we were doing our Summer Bridge program, and it was our student leaders that planned it and implemented everything. They had the teachers there, and they basically instructed the teachers what they were supposed to do, and they were there to help support that. So we are making as many leadership opportunities as we can for our students, so they can show and practice what they are going to do once they get out into the world. The other thing is that we are promoting and creating as many opportunities that our parents can come in and be a part of what's going on. From the Summer Bridge program, where we had a time where the parents came and celebrated Summer Bridge, we also created where parents could come in and do the guided tours, and that was through our student leadership. Our student leaders were guiding them around this large campus and showing them how to get around. We have had many opportunities that we've gone out into our community, and just this weekend, we were there at the street fair, and we were with the multicultural and the, working with El Refugio, our student, our student leaders were there, and promoting what we do at Lee County High School. So thank you so much, and I know that we will see lots of gains this year with the improvements that we're putting in place.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for these representatives of our four schools?
If all four want to come back up to the podium, I think.
It's not a firing squad, I promise.
I'll go first and say that, first of all, you know your school's the best, because you're the principal, and you there, and leadership starts at the top, and I have full support and trust in every one of you, that these plans, the facts that come from the administration team, and your teachers and your parents that put into it, is what needs to happen at your schools, because you know your school's the best. A seven up here don't know anything about your schools like y'all do. I fully trust the plans you put in front of us, and trust that you will do your best to improve your schools. Again, this is not a firing squad, it's a tough hill to climb, but I trust you, and know that you'll get the job done.
I look at these four people standing before us, and I see at least two of them who are relatively new to the school, that they are asked to grab the helm and direct a very large, very gangly ship onto a path that will be more successful for the students who come out of their schools. And I both recognize the challenge that that entails, but also the reward that can come with it. And so I not just wish you the best, but if there's some support that you need from this board, from this administration, that you will let us know what that is. I did want to ask a question, and it, I've read all the documents that were presented to us, but I just, for the fun of it, did you base these goals based on the data that you received for student performance? Have you reviewed your teacher working condition surveys, and determining what would be the goals most effective for your schools? And has the administration at Central Office been helpful to you in guiding the access to data to make decisions? Thank you. This wasn't just something you sat around tonight and said, you know, let's put something on paper, so that it looks like we're doing our jobs, but rather, it is a very detailed, very time-intensive. And so I don't want anybody to leave here thinking that we just come up with answers because somebody said we had to, but that we're deep diving into data and making decisions in a way that we believe are going to move the needle for our students. That's what we've been elected to do, that's what you've been hired to do, and I thank you for it.
As a, I've got one more perspective, but first of all, as a board member, thank you for presenting these plans. As a parent, I have two kids at Lee County High School, and I have one at Wesley Middle, and two that have gone through Wesley Middle. I have 100% confidence in the leadership teams in those two schools, particularly Wesley. I've seen a huge, huge change in the last year, and I think that's due to your leadership, and I appreciate that. Same thing at Lee County High School. My mom taught for probably 10 years at Eastly, used to be junior high, so I have a vested interest in Eastly also, and my wife attended JR Ingram. So we're all invested in this. I don't want you guys to feel like you're on an island to what Sandra said. If we can help, please reach out, because we're walking with you, not just observing. So thank you all.
I want you guys to know that I wrote some comments down before any of our three other folks spoke, and it's the same message, that I trust you, you have 100% of my support. I've been in, outside a lot of Lee County High School, and I know the passion they have. I've been at one of the other schools just recently, and to sit with principals and staff there, just to see the passion that you have. These aren't, these aren't new, you're not inventing these goals overnight. You've instilled a lot of them already, and you're just zeroing in on things that you know are going to be successful. Now, some of them, we may have let, not been as supportive for a little while, but they're back, and, but they're not new goals. I've been in education for 30 years, and I've been in some of these same meetings, so I know that you know your schools, and you know the goals are going to work. So with that being said, please don't hesitate to contact me, but you have 100% of my support, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Dr. Dawson-Buck, did you have anything to add to this?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Christine, I'm sorry. Did you have something to add?
I, too, want to echo everything all of the previous members have said. I, too, have full faith in everything that all of you are going to do, and all of your staff will do to improve those goals. I also implore, you added, all of you had goals referring, or reaching out to the families. Please, 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 help your students remember, school is back, we're back 100%. It's time to remember why you're there every day, to do your best. All of our students, and our parents and our families, all need to help remember to push that to them every day. We're out from behind the screen, it's time to shine, it's time to do your best, show what you know, and be your very best self. And the four principals standing before us, thank you. Yes, these were not goals just written down on a napkin. That data is reviewed, and researched, and looked at, and looked at again, upside down, backwards, and sideways, and I know what it's going to look like. I know what it looks like now, and I can't wait to see what it's going to look like with all of these fabulous goals in place. So thank you for all your hard work, and please reach out if you feel there needs to be some more support. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. The next item under new business is a 2022-2023 retention bonus. Ms. Hilliard?
The Finance Committee reviewed an employee retention bonus plan at a September 29, 2022 committee meeting that outlined the following parameters. All permanent, full-time employees, certified and classified, who work six to eight hours per day, will receive a $2,000 bonus. All permanent, part-time employees, certified and classified, who work less than six, excuse me, six hours per day, will receive a prorated, as compared to full-time employees in their position, share of a $2,000 bonus. The purpose of the bonus is to incentivize staff to stay with the district through the school year. Therefore, staff receiving the bonus will be required to repay, to repay a prorated portion of the bonus if they leave the district prior to June 30, 2023. The funding source is federal ESAR funds. If approved, the bonus will be paid by Thanksgiving break, and can be used to recruit new teachers and staff until February 1, 2023. The final break, the financial breakdown of the bonus is as follows. Just 1,400 employees, $2.8 million, I'm sorry. 2,000, I'm sorry, my contacts are out. Our total is $3.7 million, to include the bonus, the social security piece, and the retirement piece that is required. The finance- The Finance Committee recommends approval of the employee retention bonus.
Is there any discussion of this coming from Finance? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the bonus as presented.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none. The retention bonus is approved. We also have, Ms. Hilliard, I have you under the teacher compensation for classroom coverage for middle and high school.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Finance Committee and staff recommend that middle and high school teachers be compensated for classroom coverage at a rate equal to $25 per hour. This is the same plan enacted during the 2021-22 school year. Even though the new substitute system has resulted in a 25% increase in coverage from subs, current teachers are still needed to cover some classes at the middle and high school levels, giving up their planning periods. Depending on the class schedule, coverage may vary from 30 to 90 minutes. In recognition of Policy 7405 stating that teachers should have a duty-free planning period as much as possible, schools are required to use the new substitute system before asking teachers to cover classes except for emergency coverage needs. Compensation for coverage will be paid from ESAR funds. Expenses for coverage will be reported to the Finance Committee and Board of Education on a monthly basis. The following chart outlines compensation in increments of time between 30 and 90 minutes. So, it's a 30-minute period, the compensation will be $12.50, 40, 16, 67, 50 minutes, $18.75, 60 minutes is $25, 70 is $29.17, and 90 minutes is $37.50.
Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding this?
Mrs. Chairman, so this would take effect as soon as we pass it, and will be from say tomorrow or the following night, or is this something that can be retroactive for the following, for the school year?
Dr. Bryan, I think, would have that clarity. It would not be immediate, as in tomorrow, it would be with the next pay cycle.
It was discussed in Finance that very question, and Finance Office, just for preparation purposes and logistics and keeping track of everything for the next pay period, as Ms. Bowen said.
So, next pay period, and there's no chance of retroactively doing it for the school year then?
I think we'd have, I'm not sure we'd have the appropriate records to support that.
Okay.
Right, nobody necessarily was keeping track. In the Finance Committee meeting, when we had this discussion, the concern I had is that I don't want to incentivize the overburdening of teachers. The goal is to protect the teachers' planning time, and I think that the committee all agreed with that, that the goal is for ESS, our substitute system, to be used as the primary means of classroom coverage. In the event that there cannot be a fill with ESS and a teacher is asked to cover it, that they be compensated. I personally know that I work at the community college, and sometimes we need an extra class, and it's, sometimes you kind of go, well, I kind of need my planning time, but I kind of could use the money too. And so, I recognize that money speaks, and we just don't want to incentivize teachers to overburden themselves and burn out, because that is not going to aid in retention. So, in the long run, we appreciate you enough to protect you, and sometimes from your own self. So, I've been guilty of that at times myself. So, this time, any other conversation or issues with the retention?
Motion to approve the retention plan as presented.
It's not retention, it's coverage. I'm sorry, I said the wrong word. Yes. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none. Thank you. Last on our new business, is that correct? Yes. Is the first reading of the policies coming out of Policy Committee, Mr. Kelly?
So, at our last committee meeting, we approved these policies for first reading, and they are on your new business agenda tonight. Policy 7510 concerning leave, policy 7550 concerning absence due to inclement weather, policy 7810 evaluation of licensed employees, and 7815 evaluation of classified employees. All of these additions or changes were coming from the North Carolina School Board Association. There is one slight change to that. The committee struck a paragraph that the North Carolina School Board Association recommended and putting language that would better suit our employees, since we know our employees the best, and we have a chart, guideline, and policy already put in place that covers the absence due to inclement weather. So, again, these are for first reading tonight.
As this is coming out of committee, it does not necessarily require a second. Any further discussion on the first reading of these policies? Hearing none, I would entertain a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? There is none. These policies are approved for first reading. At this time, I'll open the floor for board member comments. Each board member is provided with three minutes to discuss or recognize anything that they have been involved in during the prior month and issues that they care to bring before the board. I will begin on this end of the table, and Ms. Hilliard, I'll let you have the last spot on the board member comments. Mr. Ladati?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll try not to run over my three minutes tonight. Yesterday was World Mental Health Day, and in light of that, I'd like to talk about one of the biggest threats to mental health, in my opinion, and that's social media. Social media is anything but social. Perhaps it was at one point, but it isn't today. Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, Snapchat, TikTok, and whatever other platforms have one objective and one objective only, and that's to keep you scrolling and keep me scrolling and keep us scrolling. They don't care how you feel when you're scrolling, if you're happy, sad, or angry, as long as you're scrolling. Because if you scroll, you're viewing ads, and if you're viewing ads, you're making them money. You and your time and your engagement are what social media is selling. I think we've all seen the damage this has done to some adults in our lives, not only kids, but adults. They disappear down mental rabbit holes and are consumed by algorithms that serve up content that outrages them most, and that's just the adults. You can imagine what it does to kids. We have to educate kids on the business of social media. I firmly believe that. They need to know how content algorithms work, they need to know how social media companies make money, they need to know that social media applications are built like slot machines because they fire the same endorphins as gambling. You have infinite scroll and pull to refresh for reasons, they're not accidental. This isn't a left or a right issue, it's a societal issue. I look forward to working with Dr. Bryan and Lee County Schools leadership to strengthen the programs that are already in place, to better educate our kids on the pitfalls of social media. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly?
I wonder if I can follow something, Jamie, but I have to agree with you 100%. But also, I think, going back to our school improvement plans and hitting on the point of having families involved and getting the community involved is key, because education only just occurs in the classroom, but it occurs at home as well, when they take their homework home, when they learn their life skills from sitting around the dinner table, as well as learning them in the hallways of our school systems. There was a couple of goals that were listed throughout each plan, actually, that need to retain teachers and attract better teachers. I think we took a step forward tonight as a board to help in those goals tonight with our approval of the bonus, but that is a nationwide and statewide problem, and something just that Lee County Schools is facing, but others were as well. So, keep up the good work for all of our school staff, districts, and across the board, and thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. McCracken?
Usually, I have something new to say, but tonight, it seems that most of what I want to say has already been said, but it is important to reiterate. First of all, thank you to our students from the Superintendent Student Advisory Group that traveled to High Point University to attend a day in the life of college, and for what Dr. Bryan did to take those students there, to brag a little bit more on them. My understanding is that not only was it a fantastic day, but High Point University took it a step farther and wants to begin using a program similar to the one we attended to become a recruiting tool for the university. So, congratulations to Lee County High School, Southern Lee High School, Lee Early College, and Brag Street Academy for your unbelievable time at the High Point University and your representation of Lee County Schools. Second thing that's been said, but it's worth saying again, the Annie Junior presentation at Lee County High School last weekend, not only what made it unbelievable, it covered kids from elementary school all the way up through high school, and it was student-led. And the young lady leading was a senior and just did an unbelievable job as directing the play. Finally, this is new, not being said twice or over tonight, but my other minute I'd like to use is, I spoke in an event last week that was attended by students, former students, parents, teachers, former superintendents, and assistant principals. Not only was the talk and the time together was amazing, but it was more amazing to see that we all want to be a part of the growth of Lee County Schools, and it takes all of us, it takes the students, it takes the parents, it takes the administrators, and it takes the superintendent, and together, we're going to be a part of the success of Lee County Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sutton?
I have no comments, thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Hilliard stepped away. She said her voice is just about gone, so she would decline comments this evening as well. I'm going to take just a moment, let me set my own timer, because sometimes I get verbose, I won't be that tonight. Just to piggyback again, I speak from a little bit of bias, as my daughter was actually involved in the Annie Junior play as well, but I think this is something that was just a small microcosm of what Lee County Schools can do when all of our levels of education work together to a single goal. You had children as young as second graders working with students as old as 12th graders to put on a fantastic production, and I think as a district, we should look for opportunities to get that cross-disciplinary and cross-grade level opportunity for our students to learn from each other and to engage in opportunities that transcend the classroom. Those students learned math, they learned geometry, they learned language, they learned literature, and all of this by just moving stage props at the right time to the right place, around the right people, and that is where education happens. It happens when it's fun. Let's bring the fun back to the classroom. So many have said, let's get them out from behind that screen and away from the logarithms, and let them remember what it is to discover, to learn, to engage, to enjoy each other's company. We live in an environment where everything seems to be so negative. Can't we, on occasion, catch them doing something good and celebrate it? And that's what I hope we've had just a little bit of this evening, is celebrating the great things that are happening in our schools. So, that concludes my comments for this evening. At this time, we would move into closed session. I believe, Mr. Kelly, I believe you have that motion this evening.
I move that the Lee County Board of Education go into closed session under North Carolina General Statute 143-318, dot 11A1, dot comma A3, and A6 to discuss confidential student information under the North Carolina General Statute Code 115C-42, and to discuss confidential personnel information under North Carolina General Statute 115C-319 and 115C-321, and to consult with the Board of Attorney and maintain attorney-client privilege.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Aye. Motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none. We will convene in closed session. Thank you. In the open session of Lee County Board of Education, we have one motion coming out of closed session.
I move the Lee County Board of Education approve the human resource report as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none. The human resources report is approved.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none. We stand adjourned.